All right, let's call this to order. At 6:31, we're one minute behind. We need to catch that up. So, we will, if you'd please stand for the invocation.
Join me if you will. My God and our Father, we're just blessed for the opportunity to come together tonight and to ask for your blessing on the City Council. Grateful for these men and women and for their contributions to our community, for the time that they give, and for their discernment, and for their leadership, and we are blessed. May you guide and direct them tonight in all the deliberations, and we're grateful for the young men tonight that will be honored. We're grateful for their achievements, and we're grateful, God, that they represent this community as well. May you continue to bless their lives and their future as well. And for all the things on the agenda, we pray that they would move smoothly and be for the benefit, God, for the betterment of this wonderful community that we love and are so blessed to be a part of. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Remain standing, and Jake, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bonner.
President.
Councilmember Aaron Crans.
Here.
Councilmember Haggerty.
Here.
Mayor Warren.
Here. Okay, approval of the City Council agenda. I see there's one change at least. 5.3 seems to have gone missing.
Yeah, it did, so we'll make it 5.4. So, 5.4, we have, we need to add to the agenda of presentations, Sheriff's Department update.
Okay.
And just also so that everybody's aware, item 10.2, mid-year budget, the initial staff report went out, and it went out with unfortunately incorrect data from the pre-budget when we were doing it earlier last year. We have the corrected using the approved budget numbers, and as you saw, there was a great difference in deficit spending, which is to the plus of the city. So, as you see, you've all received an email copy, you'll all have hard copies with you. We've also put a copy of the revised staff report and projections on the website.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? No, the motion pass. Okay, special presentation. Jim, are you going to give this? Okay, then why don't you come up? And then we're done with you. Chamber of Commerce announcements, please.
Finally?
I know. My gosh, he's been exiting for a year.
Madam Mayor, Council, first off, I'd like to say, for three years, I've enjoyed working with the Council and the city. The city manager and assistants and everybody involved. We're moving forward, like any other organization, you've got to get new blood and new thought process going. So, come the 24th, that'll happen. Which brings me to, next week is the last week we can take RSVPs for the gala, only because we've got to give the head count to the lodge, what have you. Also, I'd like to announce our community award winners for this year. I wasn't in on the meeting. In fact, I wouldn't even really sure who was put up for the different. But Volunteer of the Year is Steve Liebring. Citizen of the Year is Mr. Panama Ron Martel. Business of the Year will be Platinum Plumbing. Organization of the Year is Canyon Lake Women's Club. Use of the Year, and I'd say that plurally, we got two of them, when I asked them about it, they said, "There's no way to do it with one." So, and I understand there's one gentleman here tonight, Jake Hoskins, and Cooper Smith. And the theme of our gala is Sail Into Success. So, and please, if anybody had planned on being there, if we could get the RSVP by the 15th, we'd be in great shape. The only other thing I'd like to bring up, after that, we are going on with our golf tournament on the 19th, May 19th, and our second annual ball drop. Last year was the first one, we did okay. I was hoping we'd do better, we didn't. Hopefully this year we can, because it's a great little moneymaker for the junior golf kids. And talking to Pat Kimball, he really appreciates what we do for him. So, thank you. Randy, I'm going to miss your smiling face.
Well, does the new president know about the next roundtables on the 13th?
Hmm, I could probably let him know that.
Okay, I appreciate if you could do that, please.
Yeah, either that or we've got to look at each other again.
That'd be okay.
That is one thing with the president, he has the option to opt out of anything and appoint someone as his person.
As long as we have president from the chamber.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Casey, would you come up? And if you'd like some support, Mom can come up, too.
I want to introduce Casey to everybody. We have a Student of the Month program that we go to, seven students out of 22,000 are chosen. It's quite an honor and quite an achievement. It goes to not only the people who get the awards, but also obviously to the parents who have put up with the people who get the awards for so long. But this is, it's truly a pleasure to see that these are the future leaders and the future members of our world stepping out into it. And when you meet people that are as exceptional as Casey, then it makes it that much more special. There are a lot of things we get to do as City Council members. I feel very blessed that it's my turn to be up there. I feel very bad for those who haven't had that chance, because it's truly an amazing privilege to be there and meet people of such caliber. So, I'm not going to read all this, because I've got a cold, obviously, but I do want you to say a few things, and I do want to highlight some of the things that you're most proud of, your achievements. If you could please let everybody know what you've done. The Student of the Month is not based only on grades, it's not just that he's a smart kid, he is a smart kid, man, sorry. Young man, Mom. But he's also an exceptional community-minded person, and that's part of what they look at also. So, Casey, I'll let you tell everybody a little bit more about yourself.
Hi there, I'm Casey McDonald, and I've been a Canyon Lake resident all my life. I just wanted to thank the board and everyone who makes Canyon Lake such a great place for young men and women like me. And I want to, my dreams and aspirations are to go to the United States Military Academy at West Point, and I want to do wonderful things in my life, and I hope to bring some of that back for, back to Canyon Lake. I've, throughout high school, I've been the captain of our school's mountain bike racing team the last two years, and I've been on the football team for all four years. I've been Student of Month twice now, and I've done some other things, but I'm most proud of those.
You want me to read all the things that we have here?
Ah, whatever you want.
Well, this is a certificate of recognition, so let's take that moment. Whereas the Students of the Month are nominated by their teachers, a nomination is usually, but not necessarily, based on grades, character, leadership, and activities. And whereas Casey has excelled in all of these areas by receiving the Titan Award for character and sportsmanship while on the mountain biking team, this guy's crazy. You should see some of the pictures of him out there. It's pretty awesome. Receiving the World History Award for having the highest grade in his sophomore year World History class, being named Scholastic Player of the Year for having the highest GPA of all football players during the season, and whereas Casey's hobbies are cooking and grilling, bowfishing, I want you to talk about that, golfing, better community, huh? Playing airsoft, point, and watching the history and military channels, and whereas Casey hopes to attend the College of the United States Military Academy at West Point, Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, or the Colorado School of Mines, M-I-N-E-S, I'm sorry about the cold. Whereas Casey hopes to major in civil engineering and serve in our military, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake does hereby extend our congratulations to Casey McDonald on his accomplishments and wish him the very best in his future endeavors. Absolutely. Thank you. So, I do want you to talk a little bit about what bowfishing means, and then I'll sit back down, and this is for you. I don't think so. No, because he wants to work, and they just don't do that in the area.
So, Casey, Casey, did you all have your interview at Calvert's office?
Yes, I have, and I do have a nomination for you.
You did? Good, congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so I've been a fisherman my whole life, and it's been great living in Canyon Lake on the water. And so, after talking to many bass fishermen, they do not appreciate the carp, they go around and mess up the bass's nest every spring. And so, one year, I took a huge landing net out because I saw some carp swimming around our dock, and I stuck it in, and I got three at once, it was probably like 45 pounds of carp. And so, a few years later, I bought this kit for my bow and arrow that I had that puts a, that attaches a string to your arrow, and then you shoot it at the carp, and you can pull them up. And so, I've been doing that for a few years now, and hopefully the bass fishermen approve of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Can I now have Jake and Ryan Hosking? We did not get to meet before the Honor Day, because we used to work for two Eagle Scout were doing that my whole life. Thank you very much for being here. These will be for you, you can put those in frames, you can use them here. For outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership and citizenship evidenced by their commitment to the rank of Eagle Scout. We put it from Jake's first time out, and certainly you would have, what it took to get to the 18th.
All right, so pretty much what it takes to get Eagle Scout is, it's a long process. Most people, it takes them all the way up to their 18th birthday, but I was really involved in scouts, and I wanted to get it done early. So, I actually finished my Eagle when I was still 14. Some of the things I had to do is, of course, I had to go through all the ranks, but for, especially for Eagle Scout, you had to have at least six hours of community service. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but throughout scouting, I've done tons of community service, and for each rank, you have to do a number of community service hours. And then I also had to, the main part of the Eagle is getting your project done. So, my project, I did actually in the city of Norco on Santa Ana Riverbed. My project was conservation based, that's why I did it on the Santa Ana Riverbed, because I was trying to prevent trash from flowing down the river, because they have a big problem with that. So, I made kind of like these shadow box signs to prevent people from littering, and also showed how long it takes for their items to decompose. And then I also, you have to get 21 merit badges, specifically, like some of these ones right here, the silver bordered ones are like the ones you specifically need for the badge. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Well, thank you both for being here, these are for you.
We appreciate you being in Canyon Lake and being such a part of our community. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan. One more thing, if I may, last time, we gave a word of recognition to the people who participated in our Veterans Day celebration. Jack Wamsley was not able to be there for his, again, Warren's not here tonight, but if I can give them to you now, I would appreciate it.
Is it his birthday? Oh, my gosh, it's his birthday? Oh, for goodness sake. 22 today. Can you imagine? It's been a hard life.
Yeah, there's a few years to live.
Happy birthday, Jack.
My 87.
Oh, my goodness, that's wonderful. Well, happy birthday, and thank you for being here.
Oh, that's beautiful, thank you.
Yes, isn't that pretty? And this is for all the, over the years, you've supported us so often. They, he and Warren always donate for the flags for Veterans Day without fail. It happens every year. Can I give you Warren's? Will you be saying?
Yes, Warren had a operation, and they put a new, I don't want you to just break it around here. They put a new heart deal, face maker.
Face maker, okay.
But anyway, he had that done Monday.
Oh, my goodness. So, he didn't feel like being here tonight.
He was unable to be here tonight, but I know he appreciates it, and both Warren and I feel that our contribution of all the flags for all of our veterans, or both veterans, and we will continue to support that.
Thank you, we appreciate it, and happy birthday again.
Okay, we have public comments, do we have?
Right?
We have, we have now 5.4, the Sheriff's Department update.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, let's do that. And now, we've cleared the room of all of our, all of the important people have left our room. This is the missing item, this is an update from the Sheriff's Department from events in Canyon Lake.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council, and members of the community. What I have today is a statistics for December of 2017 in Canyon Lake. I'll also speak about incidents that occurred in November that changed some of these statistics for December, as well as some other events that occurred last month in January that are of interest. During the month of December 2017, the Canyon Lake Police Department responded to 296 calls for service. That's up only two calls from the month previously. We always hover around the 300 mark, or have for the last few months. During the month of December, there were eight Part 1 crimes. Part 1 crimes are the most heinous of crimes, either violence or high theft or loss of property. Those eight crimes consisted of four aggravated assaults. None of those assaults were stranger on stranger. Three were domestic violence, and one was two females who got into it at the sports bar, who knew each other and had a previous misunderstanding. There was one burglary, and three larceny thefts. In December, there was no vehicle thefts, but back in November, we had four thefts of vehicles, which was a significant spike for the community. We assigned a master investigator to look into that. There was an arrest of an individual after the four cars had been stolen. He was responsible for the first theft, and from that arrest on, no other thefts have occurred. So, we think that may have been part of the reason. Also, in December, there were one vandalism report, there was one vandalism report made, and one public intoxication arrest, three DUIs, and two traffic collision reports. In January, we had a couple items of interest. There was one major arrest made by the Sheriff's Special Investigation Bureau, I'll get to that. One of the problems that was identified by residents on Holiday Harbor, they made a complaint to some of the deputies that there were some people out there using drugs, doing donuts in the parking lot, and causing some havoc. So, the deputies did go out there, do proactive patrols. They made 43 individual checks of the area in between calls for service. We received no other complaints from those homeowners. Hopefully, that got the message across to those individuals. In January, on the 26th, the Sheriff's Special Investigations Bureau served a search warrant on the 29,600 block of Bonanza Place in Canyon Lake, where Anthony Zidelk, 30 years old of Canyon Lake, was arrested. They discovered an illegal marijuana indoor grow operation, along with equipment for a butane honey oil lab. And a butane honey oil lab is a way of extracting THC from marijuana, making it more potent. There was also evidence that the occupants were stealing electricity to operate the illegal grow, and they estimated that about $60,000 in electricity theft that occurred over several months. A total of 82 mature marijuana plants were removed from the house. Mr. Zidik also possessed 53 pounds of processed marijuana for sales, along with seven ounces of honey oil cannabis. He told investigators that he was growing the marijuana for the purposes of sales out of his mobile dispensary. And that's all I have, unless the Council has questions or any of the members of the public do. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. When we tow a car, we take it to a lot, it is unpaid, it is so expensive.
Now, when you say "we," there's two different toes. When the city tows it, okay. Generally, a tow company, and they'll do the same thing when we have a car towed. The registered owner or the owner on file will be notified by certified mail and/or other means contacted by regular mail. After a certain amount of time, the tow company puts a lien on the vehicle, and if that lien is not responded to, they take ownership of it. That's generally the way it occurs. Sure, or they can resell the car, fix it, whatever, yeah, whatever the case may be, they become the owners. If the owner doesn't respond, pay the tow fees, et cetera. You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On a tow that was done January 10th of '18 off of Vacation Drive, it was by lawyers Triple L Towing, and apparently it was initiated by the sheriff. The tow bill was $484, and we're trying to backtrack as far as cost recovery, because we were billed and have paid already. So, I think that the city manager would like to...
We, yes, and I think we've discussed that one, is that right, Erin? Or is that one that's still outstanding?
Not as of yesterday.
Yeah, that was still, right, well, that's still outstanding, but you explained to me how it was done, but we're explaining with regards to cost recovery, what are our options? Do we have any? So, what happens when we have that towed for a case?
Okay, in this case, I believe it was a fatal traffic collision, is that right? It was on vacation?
Vacation.
I believe it was, and what was the date, sir?
Yeah, the date I have is, it says 12/21/17, but the date actually, that the document, the check was cut was 1/10/2018. So, maybe it was a vacation fatality, maybe that's...
I believe it was, because we did have a discussion about that incident.
Yeah.
It does say collision?
Say vacation.
Okay, okay, oh, vacation, right. If it was that, the car is towed for evidence purposes. It was involved, and if I'm not mistaken, it was the actual driver who died in the crash, who I believe was or is considered at fault at this point. I'm not sure if the investigation's complete or complete, but it took the tow company, and if it's the same one, two hours to, from arrival to getting back to their tow yard, and then there's storage fees that build up on top of that.
Okay.
Now, that fee came to us because we held it for evidence, we being the Sheriff's Department. The budget items in the Canyon Lake budget does allow for tow's, vehicle evidence tow's, and I believe I sent that to Erin, I don't recall how much there is, but that's what that fee is for.
Okay, I just, because we didn't get a chance to catch you yesterday, and this happened to be one of our items of discussion, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question about the marijuana arrest.
Yes.
Is he back in the lake? Was he released?
He was released shortly after the arrest. It's a nonviolent crime, there wasn't room at the jail, so, yes, he was released on his own recognizance until his court date.
Okay. I have a question for you, because he seemed very forthcoming in his reasons for growing so many. Is there possibly a misunderstanding of what the laws really are? My, I'm assuming that he didn't understand that only six plants are allowed?
The plants are the least of his issues.
Right.
Everything involving the plants is low level.
Right.
The theft of the utilities is a high-level felony.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and the butane, even though we didn't find a lab, we found the evidence that he could have had one or made one, that's a non-issue. But the fact that he had it for sales, they found enough to, at least in their minds, the investigators believe it was more than personal use. So, he has possession for sales, and then the theft of the utilities.
Okay. Now, we had, Erin and I had spoken about this a little bit. It helps our community and our enforcement to have a heads-up, that something like this is coming our way. There are laws and rules, we have regulations that this man violated, that I assume we're catching up with those, but it would have been much easier at the moment. So, as much as possible, I understand the need for secrecy and so forth, but you were there for a while, so if you could let us know, then rather after the fact is a little bit late for us sometimes.
Absolutely, Erin. Erin and I spoke about that, and I told him that in the future, I can't provide pre-information, but once it occurs, and you're right, we'll be there for a while, I'll be more than happy to notify you so that you can do your code enforcement citations.
All right, that helps, thank you.
You're welcome.
You say he operated a mobile dispensary?
He told the investigators that it was for his mobile dispensary, yes.
And where was he operating that?
I don't know. I don't know what his route was or where he did that.
I'm assuming in the lake.
Well, I don't think we allow that here in the lake, but...
I don't think you do.
Or anywhere else, perhaps, so you don't know where he was operating that.
I don't, I don't have information on what he specifically told them. That'll come out in court.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Next slide, now we're on to public comments. Are there any public comments?
There is one.
Okay, would you read the...
Regarding public comments, any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on an agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the City Council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. We have one request for public comments, and that's for Barry Talbot. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, it's always a pleasure to witness what's going on with the city these days, and thank you for the fine job you're doing. I was under the impression that for the last couple of City Council meetings, that the mayor from Menifee was expected to maybe be present and make some comments, and I was also under the impression that some of those comments might be regarding a zip code change. I'm asking for either referral to staff or a quick response to my question. Are we doing something to maintain the zip code and maybe even get Canyon Lake's own zip code finally?
Okay, I can answer some of that, and Erin can probably chime in with some also. There was a miscommunication, Mr. Winter was supposed to be here, but their council meetings are on the same night as our council meetings, so he won't be able to be here to give an update. He...
there for a while, so if you could let us know, then rather after the fact is a little bit late for us sometimes.
Absolutely, Erin. Erin and I spoke about that, and I told him that in the future, I can't provide pre-information, but once it occurs, and you're right, we'll be there for a while, I'll be more than happy to notify you so that you can do your code enforcement citations.
All right, that helps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You say he operated a mobile dispensary?
He told the investigators that it was for his mobile dispensary, yes.
And where was he operating that?
I don't know. I don't know what his route was or where he did that.
I'm assuming in the lake.
Well, I don't think we allow that here in the lake, but...
I don't think you do.
Or anywhere is perhaps, so you don't know where he was operating that?
I don't. I don't have information on what he specifically told them. That'll come out in court.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, council.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Next item. Now, we're on to public comments. Are there any public comments?
There is one.
Okay. Would you read the...
Regarding public comments, any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on an agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. We have one request for public comments, and that's for Barry Talbot. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, council members, it's always a pleasure to witness what's going on with the city these days, and thank you for the fine job you're doing. I was under the impression that for the last couple of city council meetings, that the mayor from Menifee was expected to maybe be present and make some comments. And I was also under the impression that some of those comments might be regarding a zip code change. I'm asking for either referral to staff or a quick response to my question. Are we doing something to maintain the zip code and maybe even get Canyon Lake's own zip code finally?
Okay, I can answer some of that, and Erin can probably chime in with some also. There was a miscommunication. Mr. Winter was supposed to be here, but their council meetings are on the same night as our council meetings, so he won't be able to be here to give an update. He was, they were approached by a citizen of Menifee who wanted various zip codes within the city of Menifee to come up. When you put it into the computer, it would come up automatically as Menifee. Now, nine-two-five-eight-seven is Canyon Lake, always has been, always will be. It is also included in the city of Menifee, but it's not one of those items, the news articles were incorrect, I guess is how I should put it. To confirm this, Mayor Winter and I are both going to meet with the postmaster of our local post office to confirm that we are all covered and that Canyon Lake will not be changing its zip code. As for becoming, as for getting our own zip code, many have tried for many years, and it's a very difficult process. We don't have a dedicated post office that is a United States post office. We have a satellite that contracts with the U.S. Postal Service, but we don't have our own. And until we get our own, if and when, then they would be more amenable to assigning it. But at this point in time, I don't see, there's been a lot of discussion, and I don't see a way to get that number dedicated. That may change when we have our meeting. That's one of the things that we're going to ask. And if it's looking more possible than it has been in the last ten years, then we'll absolutely do it. I would love to have it dedicated. At this point in time, we do have a zip code plus four. If you use those four numbers, it'll always come up as Canyon Lake. Those four numbers are assigned to our city. Any other of the four numbers that go in for Menifee, then it goes up to Menifee. So I hope that answers. I've gotten a lot of calls on this and a lot of emails, and I want to assure everybody that we are working to make sure that we are not changed in any way. And that has been, from the beginning, has been the promise by Menifee, and it continues to be. Erin, do you have anything to add?
Basically, yeah, what the mayor said is all correct. We're under the impression, and Mayor Bonner started, when Councilmember Bonner was mayor, they talked about this as well. The zip code doesn't change. The zip code won't change. It has to do with the name that comes up automatically in computer searches with regards to that. I get my League of Cities monthly magazines to the city of Canyon Lake to me, and it says Quail Valley.
We'll be saying Menifee in the future.
Right, and so I think that was the big thing, is that Menifee, the city of Menifee associated with our zip, the zip code would come up Quail Valley as opposed to Menifee. And so they're trying to get the name portion associated with the zip code changed. And that's all.
This is not a unique issue to us. When I was at the League of Cities meeting in January, up in the north, there's a county next to Alameda, and the city is in the adjacent county, but the zip code's because they don't have geographical boundaries. They go over larger areas. Their zip code is actually tied to the county of Alameda, and they're not in Alameda. And they've been trying to get it changed to reflect the county they're in, and I kind of shared our little story, and they were laughing because they've been doing the battle for about ten years, so...
It's terrible. So if I understand correctly, then we may be, if it proceeds as a schedule, we may actually be, if somebody does a computer search, it would be Canyon Lake, Menifee.
It would be, it would be Menifee. It would be Menifee.
Barry, there's a lot of, some confusion. There's three zip codes we're talking about. One was Romeland, and one I don't remember, but the one had to do nine-two-five-eight-seven is going to be Canyon Lake. That's the, that's the intent that they are going forward with. And the mayor of Menifee, Neil Winter, is working on it, on our benefit, to make that happen.
Sure would be nice.
That's why, and I'll give an update to, as soon as I go, but that's why I'm going with him, to confirm that the initial conversation was that nine-two-five-eight-seven wouldn't be touched. Couple articles came out that indicated that it might be, got us all a little nervous. But it, it won't be, because I'll be there.
Yeah, that's our impression, is your zip code is not to change.
Right.
Thank you, and I wish you success.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven, the consent calendar. Please read the consent calendar statement.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters. Status reports are documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed or for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
I move that consent calendar is approved.
Are there any items that anybody wants pulled? No?
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Crans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hankerty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Green?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Okay, that moves us all the way down to eight. We'll pull the consent calendar. Items, sorry. Number nine, schedule of future events. Those are listed on the city's webpage and in the Friday Flyer. If there, there is one that will be added, we just added a new task force, so I will get that on there, and then we'll get that on the page also. If anybody has anything that they would like to add to our city page, please let us know, and we'll see about putting that on there also.
Mayor?
Yes.
What are you going to add, the I-15?
That's what I was just saying. As soon as I, we don't have a date certain yet. I think March, I think April is what they were talking about. But we may have a meeting in between, and I'll go into that new task force with a little more detail a little later. Okay. Number ten, business items. Review of the fiscal year 2016, 2017 audited financial statements.
Great, so we have Finance Director Shea here, who will go over the recent audit for the city.
Terry, you getting older?
It's hard, ever. Plus, I sit all day.
I don't think, he doesn't need it for this item.
Just the next item, but that's not... All right. What you have before you is the audit. I use the same pictures as the award. I'll go over staff report real quick. Attached, you find the city of Canyon Lake's annual financial report, and it's from our auditors, Lansal Long Hard. They were out in December, and then I prepare the statements. They issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance they can give us. They also look at our internal controls over all of our processes, and they issue a letter. If we have any findings, they'll report in that. So I was happy to say there were no internal controlled delinquencies, no findings. At the end of June 30th, 2017, the general fund fund balance was $3,993,000, of which $1,846 was non-spendable. $75,000 was assigned to certain items, which left a balance of $3.9 million, which was available to use to fund ongoing operations. Total general fund revenues last year were $4,826,000. Total expenditures were $4,217,000, which left us with an increase of fund balance for the year of $609,000, which was a great year. Our pension liability, which is the, our PERS liability, did go up this year, which was expected because they lowered the discount rate. It went up about $92,000, so we're at $315,000 now, which every city in Southern California would be crying for that number, so we're doing well. I did get a question on the debt the city has. We have basically two items of debt, and both of those are pledged with Measure A. One is an interest-free loan from the county, of which we already have paid the fiscal 1718 number, which leaves about ninety, I can add here, ninety-nine, eighty, ninety, $90,000 left for next year with no interest. So Erin suggested we might want to pay that off, and maybe we do. Maybe we just pay that and budget the whole thing next year, and we don't have to pay the, we'll pay the first payment on time, and then the second payment at the end of the year, and then we'll be done with that. The other loan is with RCTC, and they keep money from what they give us for Measure A monthly, and I don't recommend paying that off early, because we've basically halfway through this current year, and the interest after that is only $600, so it's not worth paying off early.
But didn't you say the other is an interest-free?
Interest-free, right.
Also, so, let's talk about that before we decide to...
Yeah, it'll be a discussion for the next year's budget.
Yeah, when we do the budget workshop, we'll bring that up.
Because we have it set to pay, and we have that loan, gosh, for years, so, interest-free. So any, any questions on the audit or anything on the report?
Anybody have any questions?
I have something, I have with him, I didn't hear.
And just for the, just for the council, those, both of those loans that we have, that we owe to the county, both are paid off in 2020.
Okay, oh, okay.
Unfortunately, it's, we don't have to use general fund money. We can use the Measure A, so that's good.
How long is the RCTC? Another two years?
It's 2020. It's, we got this, this fiscal year and then two more. But it's paid off about a quarter of the way through the second year, so, pretty quick. And there is a detailed schedule. If you look on page, page thirty-two of the audit report, you can see the schedule, so... So it looks like in fiscal year ending June 30th, 20, there's $19,000 due, and we pay $7,000 a month, so you're looking at about three months.
Okay, nice. Are there any public comments on this agenda item? Okay. No action necessary on this?
Receiving file.
Receiving file. Okay, thank you, Terry. I think you need to stay there, though.
No, no problem.
Ten point two, review of the fiscal year 2017, 2018 mid-year budget. Review and projections and approval of proposed budget adjustments.
And we'll turn it over to Mr. Shea.
Okay.
Just want to apologize for scaring everybody, and like Erin said, we're just making sure you're reading what you're giving us, so that's good, so... So what we did is, the mid-year review, I took a look at where we were at through December. We have to remember, through December, we're usually two, two months behind on most revenues and one month behind on expenditures, unless it's police and fire, which is a quarter and then a quarter, probably because they bill kind of slow. There's no interest, so we don't press them to bill us. We know it's coming, and so we just leave it alone, so... So what you have here is the, I took a look at where we were at, and so, actual revenues through December of 2017 with projections for the remainder of the year, I think we're going to be about $114,000 over. Some of those I know are going to increase is the triple flip, because we get two payments of that, and we've already received the first half, and so I increased that one. And then the second one is sales tax. We got a big settlement in December, and so I know that's going to be over. So I increased the budgeted revenues for the triple flip and the sales tax, and then we, we received a couple grants, and so I increased for that. And so revenues, I think, will be over, but being conservative, I only up those four items and not a lot. Actual expenditures through December 17, I think are going to be right on target. I think fire is going to be lower than projected based on the first quarter, but we haven't seen the second quarter yet, so there's some potential savings there. Public works are, the building permits, the revenues are up, but also the expenditures are up, so I just propose to see where they're at. And if there's anything major changes in there, we'll come back to you in April to adjust that budget. I just wanted to see a couple more months to see where we were at.
Terry?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. When you go down to actual expenditures?
Okay.
We talked about this yesterday. Line, sentence number two?
Right.
Which is talking about the fire station improvements. Has that been modified to take out the diesel exhaust system?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I fixed all that.
Okay, thank you.
I was at home, and I was using the internet, and I looked at the staff report, and I went from the budget that was first presented, and then Erin called me, and I went to the minutes, and I thought, okay, so, but, yeah, so, so we fixed all that, so... And so, but there are some items that are over, and there are some items that we need to adjust, and there are some new appropriations that we're coming to you guys to discuss tonight, whether you want to do them or not. So the first one is workers' compensation insurance for city council is higher than anticipated. So, and they kind of hit the city council harder, because you guys are the one that makes the decision, so you pay the bulk of the, of the workers' comp, and so that's why that is $1,800 higher. City manager wants to include $40,000 for UT polling, so we can see where we're at and what we need to do if they're going to have to extend the UT or go out for a new election. The next page is, city attorney costs are running a little over right now. I think at December, we're at, which is only through November, we're at... Somewhere here. Never print two-sided, because it drives me crazy. We're over the budget. This one, how come they didn't include the new one with the different percentages? Oh, they did? All right. Okay, it's not on my copy here, though, so...
They have, they have it.
Okay, so I figured another $10,000 increase, and I spoke with Betsy, and she's okay with that. She's going to try to keep the costs under and try to keep it under the original appropriation, but since she's already at about, what, 60% through November, so we decided to increase it. Salaries in the city clerk department, we did not budget Ariel as an employee, but she worked the first two months, July and August, because the council asked her to stay. And so we need to adjust that, and that is $4,725. And then we hired, with Jean retiring, they needed more office help, so they hired Victoria. And that's $10,000, or $13,000 for her for October to June, which is a salary savings from Jean when she retired at the end of September. So that's that, no increase there. With Stephanie being out on maternity leave, you've asked Ariel to come back and help, and so we figure, we already had $4,000 of Ariel's time in the budget, and so we figure we needed another $6,800 just to be safe for that time period. That's what the $6,800 is for. The fire station last year at mid-year, remember, we added the landscaping to the fire station, and then I was going to move it to the fire department the next year, and so I took it out of where I had it last year and forgot to put it in the fire department, so that's that $3,000 there. Mike had indicated that there was some criminal activity out at the shed, and so he's proposing to put a fence up, and that's $1,800, which is a new appropriation that the council needs to approve if they want it. We did get a grant to purchase EOC equipment, and so that's in there, but that's offset by a grant revenue. And then another expenditures for CERT training, which we also received a grant to cover those costs. And then public works at the beginning of the year, I wasn't able to get a very good idea from those guys, so we just used, I think, $50,000, and they kind of went past that. And so I projected another five grand a month, and that gets us to about 92, and so we need another $42,000 for that. Then that's the $6,500, the two decreases are Jean's retirement. And then there was a new idea for gas tax fund proposed by, is it Charles Abbott?
No, that actually, it actually came from council.
Council, okay, to do mulch. And that would be out of the gas tax fund, and that's an additional $15,600. And so if these budget adjustments are proposed for the general fund, our surplus, our budgeted surplus goes from $63,541 to a deficit of $1,914, and that includes the $40,000 for the polling, the UT polling. So if you choose not to do that now, then we'll still be in the surplus.
Terry, you might, to the public, explain what EOC equipment is...
The EOC is the Emergency Operations Center, and then the grant is an emergency management performance grant. And then the CERT training is, what does the CERT stand for? Do you remember?
Citizens Emergency Response Team.
It's the, citizens' emergency response team, those two, and then the grant.
Also, can I add on the mulch issue? This is an in-house project, instead of being managed by Charles Abbott. If you look at our north and some of our areas, we have a lot of exposed plumbing, and most of the mulch that was put there on the original landscape is being, is essentially gone. And two, three things can happen. One, water conservation. Two, aesthetics. And three, it will protect the pipes and give us probably another two years, at least two years, that those pipes will be protected. And if we do it within this next window of two months, it's the coolest part of the year, and we have a better chance. Also weed control, that's the last one. But that gives us a chance to save our pipes and save some maintenance cost.
And we do have funds available in the gas tax fund for that, so... So any questions on any of these proposed adjustments?
I'm, I have to say, I'm concerned. I'm, I have to say, I'm concerned the initial two hundred and eighteen thousand in the red was scary enough, but then we're also not balanced here.
Budget-wise, right.
The UUT, if we remove that, or at least remove half of that, we have no idea how much that's going to cost, if it's going to cost, what direction we're even going to go. Does anybody have questions on this before I go on? Okay. My concern is that this was, that these adjustments were made less than twenty-four hours ago, and, or right around there. I would like to have some more time to look at these, to find out where we can bring this down so that we're not in the red even for nineteen thousand.
Certainly, and you can pick and choose which items you want to approve or bring back.
Right.
And we could take a look at when we get our first property taxes in January, and then the next fire invoice. There may be savings available, which we could shift around, and you don't have to do all of them tonight, you don't have to do any of them tonight, but just making you aware of them, that's all.
Okay. Is it possible to ask you to come back, either for a special meeting or for a meeting next month to discuss this, to go into it? I really need some more time with this.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
We can initially, we'll initially plan for it for the March meeting. If you want to have something sooner, we can. If you'd like it for the March meeting, we'll bring it back in the March.
March meeting is fine, but I'm just not comfortable moving forward with it until I get some of these questions answered.
Okay.
And this was, was two last week.
Sure.
So should we pull item ten point two?
Yeah, can you write me a check for that? Jordan says he'll write a check for nineteen, we're good. Just kidding, just kidding. Make it twenty, run it up, come on.
Should we pull ten point two?
So then that would, we would be pulling then ten point two?
We'll continue the item.
Continue the item to March?
Yes.
Yeah, there, I mean, we don't have to rush into any of these.
Right.
Okay.
Some of them aren't going to change, and we're going to need to do.
Yeah.
But we may have a better idea on the, on the, on the revenue side of it, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, just not comfortable going forward with it, so.
We'll bring that back in March, and as you have questions throughout the month, please let us know.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, just take it with you, any questions, and then I'll update the revenues.
Okay.
And update the projections.
When you have those, let's you and I plan on, at least by telephone, but if not, in person, we'll sit and talk.
Because in January, we got our big checks.
Yeah.
And so I can take a look at that.
Okay.
And then, by the time we meet again in March, we'll have probably two more sheriff's bills and the fire bill, so we'll be better off, so.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to take a moment to address real quick, we had talked about attorney's fees. I know the ten thousand had been kind of moved off last time to help budget the, balance the budget, and so I know the ten is coming back. Just so that, so that the public understands, these attorney's fees, about, what, ninety-nine hours, I think we figured?
Well, I took a look. This is higher than sometimes. I would say there were three things that caused it to be higher. Two of which are almost resolved. One of them was all the work on the cannabis ordinances, that isn't going to happen again. The other one was a lot of code enforcement work, as Jean retired, Gina was closing out her cases. That's the highest of the special issues. We have probably one more court appearance left, and then, other than what you may hear later tonight, that's the only unusual outstanding case.
And those we may recoup?
To a certain extent, to the, to the extent funds are recoupable and available, yes, they're recoup, they are legally recoverable. And the third one is Mr. Zeitz, who has to date since December of 2016, a hundred public records requests and some other pieces, and a piece of litigation. And it looks like between December 2016 and now, the total cost in attorney's fees is about twenty-two thousand dollars.
Jeez, listen, okay.
Now, code enforcement is more, however, but, but.
Code enforcement is a city issue that all cities have to deal with, and this was something we would have.
It was an accrued issue, you hadn't really done a whole lot with it for a while, so eventually it got to the point where it was necessary.
Right. Now, I know we've talked about this before, and I know that there's, there's really nothing we can do to limit this, but I, but I hope we all understand what this means. This is a great deal of money. My favorite was, I got to say it, was when he asked to talk about the sign on the town center, this is the city, and that's the Merchant Owners Association, and it has nothing to do with it. I don't think his goal is to actually acquire this information, I think he's just trying to run the city out of money as much as he possibly can. But one of the things was harmful, and that was when he went to attack our use of funds, state funds, to get a vehicle to code enforce out into the BLM lands. We can't do it in a sedan, we need a four-wheel drive. There are funds available that you can ask the state for, we went to do that. He did his best to keep that from happening, so he's doing everything he can to cost the city money and to vex as much as possible. Our staff is overtaxed because of this. This is ninety-nine hours of attorneys, and we haven't even looked at what the staff is. So this is, I don't know what the end game is, I just know that this is very disheartening to look at this figure and know that, that the code enforcement will probably go down. We won't have another cannabis issue that we have to deal with, but a hundred, a hundred in a year?
Well, it's a little over a year.
A month over a year? Yeah, December 2016.
Yeah, it's a month over a year.
It's a month over a year, so thirteen months.
I want to be fair.
Right, I understand, and, and some of them, some of them have caused, that's not even counting the issues that it caused with, with some of our council members here, and continues to cause, so.
It's caused my staff a lot of time, too.
Oh, my goodness.
It's not just attorney's fees, it's...
No, it's our staff, it's city staff, and it's our accounting.
It's hard on staff.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, it's just ridiculous, so you got to wonder what the hell.
There you go, you said right.
Okay, so, that is my, that was my, I wanted the public to understand where, where this money, when you look at these attorney's fees and you say, what are we doing? Well, now you understand, we aren't doing anything. There is one person that is causing a lot of money and man-hours. Okay, that's, ten is over, let's go to eleven. Yes, sorry.
I just wanted to point out that Mike Borja, Borja, has made a significant contribution of savings to the city in the number of grants that he's been able to obtain for us. I'm amazed at how many grants he's been able to come up with, and I just want to thank you, Mike, for that, because it's really saved the city a lot of money, and will continue to. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Mike. Okay, so we're going to move into a public hearing. Public hearing, do you want to read the little board?
I can't.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearing and adoption of Resolution Number 2018 dash zero six, declaring 21, 734 Appaloosa Court to be a public nuisance and ordering and authorizing the city staff to take the necessary steps to cause abatement of that nuisance.
So at seven twenty-six, we will open the public hearing. Staff presentation?
Gina?
Test, okay, it works. A little bit, a little bit. So we're here on behalf of the property on Appaloosa Court. You can reference your staff report for the history. This has been an ongoing issue for several years. We're trying to, and have been trying to work with the property owner and her son without responsive efforts on their behalf to remedy the violations. So we were coming to you, hoping to move forward in the process, that it is, it appears to have been stalled for several years. Based on California State Health and Safety Code, we're asking that you review what I've provided and consider some of the options that we have to move the enforcement process forward. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have pertaining to your staff report. I'm not sure how the city attorney feels about presenting any photos, it's not, I don't know if it would be okay to do, so I'm going to refer that, defer that to you. But we do have photos, if you feel that photos would be necessary in your determination of the property.
I think, I think we've received photos, and we've got, most of us have got a pretty good idea of what you're dealing with.
Okay.
So, so just to articulate it, so we're clear on the record of the hearing, Gina and her staff have documented a series of violations of both local building codes and state codes, which make the property uninhabitable. It's red-tagged at present. I think the general consensus is that it may, well, there is, there is a serious question of whether it needs to be demolished. Because there had been no demolition permit obtained or pursued, and this has gone on for so long, more than, I think, maybe pushing four or five years, we decided to initiate a nuisance proceeding to ask the council if they would consider declaring this as a nuisance. Assuming that you were to do that, that after a period in which the athletes who are present tonight could comply, if they did not comply and weren't given additional time, eventually you could begin to look at a variety of remedies. Those would include placement of a receiver on the property, who would take the necessary steps to determine whether it could be repaired or demolished. Demolition will take a court order, a receivership is also a court-ordered process, so we would be getting your consent as we moved along to spend the money to do that. The city could, in fact, go forward on its own and do that. I don't know that we recommend that, because you'd have to have a lot of outside contractors. But the purpose would be to remove the nuisance, either demolish the property and have it be a vacant lot, or to bring it up to code, if that's possible.
Do, do we know what is possible? Do we know if there's?
I don't.
When, when you said that, once this notice has been given, if the city council decides to do that, that then they would have a period of time to comply. Comply would consist of what?
It would consist of either demolishing the structure and removing the debris from the property and cleaning up the remainder of the property, or bringing the property up to code and making it habitable. And it, the process contains a variety of pieces of due process. It begins with a notice to them, and there's been a series of warning letters, which Gina included in here. Then there's a formal notice which is served on them. There was a thirty-day period for them to consider the notice and decide if they wanted to comply. Then, assuming, just for the sake of going forward, that you do this tonight, there will be another notice served on them that we give an additional time. If at the end of that time they haven't complied, you can move forward with enforcement.
Okay, the compliance is a concern to me, because how many notices have been sent out? How many conversations have been had, letters have been written discussing the various problems? And there's been no compliance, no response in most cases, and not any productive response when we did get it. So I'm a little concerned about the, I guess by law, we have to provide that period of time.
Have we met due process?
You have. If you, if you adopt this, if you adopt the resolution tonight, there will be one more piece of due process. And through, throughout any process, the law protects the property owner as you move forward.
Okay, the second part of that...
I would say you met and exceeded.
We met and exceeded. I thought we probably had, due to our noticing and all the things that we've done along the way.
Gina and the code enforcement staff have made a variety, have done a variety of things to try to work with the property owner.
Okay, how about the last piece of this, which is probably the most important? We've got tremendous amount of staff time, legal time, and notice time. We've got law enforcement involved when we had to serve the inspection warrant, so we've got a lot of costs that are, been generated because of this property.
Are these recoverable?
That's where I'm going. I want to make sure that we've documented them and try to go after the property owner, I guess that's who we'd have, or, or lien it.
The property itself, so, let's talk about two possible scenarios, not to recommend, but assume for the sake of argument that the city, your code provides for you to recover your expenses. Again, the process requires notice and a hearing, separate from the hearing on the nuisance, on those costs. If that process goes forward and the costs are adopted by the council, they're placed as either a special assessment or a lien on the property. And the city has done that successfully and repeatedly, although never with a structure this large. So that, that is, that's a procedure you pretty much have used. If, if you were to look at a receiver, and, and, once the lien goes on the property, usually it remains there till it's sold or until you decide you want to foreclose it. In this case, I think there may be some prior liens, so that might not be the best way to do it. If you want to look at a receivership, the receiver has costs, there are additional costs, they are technically recoverable, but the bottom line is, in both cases, it all depends on the value of the property, and it may not be immediately available to you. It's a process.
Okay, are there any other questions by city council to the staff?
Yes, do we have, or have we obtained any kind of valuation on the property without the residence?
We have a general idea of the value of the property minus any pre-existing liens or mortgages.
Thank you. Okay, so we now take, do you have further comments? Testimony from, I don't think it were time for the motion yet. Right, also, so this, that was our testimony of the proponents, now testimony from the athletes.
I'm Nancy Athie, and I'm the owner of the property.
That way it gets recorded.
I'm Nancy Athie, I'm the owner of the property, and this is my son Jay Athie. There seems to be a real mix-up here. We tried to fix that property. We bought, I brought that property in nineteen seventy-three. Okay, it was fixer-upper. Okay, we got permits to put on a new roof, new windows, we did the stucco on the outside, new garage door. Inside, kitchen, okay, so there are a lot of improvements on that property. However, there was a big rainstorm, and we noticed a leak from the steps and the patio into the garage, so we had to remove wall, and we found a lot of dry rot, rot. We also found substandard footing, okay? And that was permitted, the substandard footing when the building was built. Okay, so, since we were pulling stuff apart, we got a notice that we had to get a building permit, which we did. Okay, for some reason, we've had three building permits already. I hired an engineer to correct the substandard footing. However, the engineer quit after submitting his forms, his, his prints to the building department three different times. He said, I just can't work with them, they're unbelievable. Okay, some of the things were, we didn't add any square footage, we had to take down a wall. And so, you came out and you said all the things that were wrong with the property. Okay, they're ready to be corrected, those things, all right, they're not done, but we're waiting on the building department. The building department lost our plans. We went to court, we got fined because we didn't complete the permits in time. Okay, but we were delayed by the planning department. The planning department lost our plans. And we went to court, and we had an agreement with Honorable Palmer, his attorney, when we were in court, code enforcement, Jean, that we could resubmit the plans to get this corrected. We need to get the sub, the substructure fixed. And he agreed it was no charge for us to resubmit the plans. Okay, we resubmitted the plans, and we were charged again. I had to pay to have them resubmitted. Okay, then there was a delay, we couldn't do anything, and they came and they red-tagged the property, they searched the property, they searched my son, why, I don't know. They took pictures, yeah, there's violations there because it's under construction, we're waiting to finish it. I thought that the building department was supposed to help the homeowners, instead, they're putting up obstacles. I want to get that done. All you have to do is submit to me all the things that you want done, and I will do them. But you're making it difficult, we can't, oh, and then another thing, it was getting so difficult that we thought maybe we should tear down part of the structure where the bad supports were, where all the structure. And then the city said, oh, you have to have an asbestos. And then the city said, "Oh, you have to have an asbestos inspection." So I paid $800 and got an asbestos inspection. Okay, we decided it was too costly to tear down the whole thing, and that we just wanted to tear down over the substandard supports. It's not my fault that we have substandard supports. Not my fault that we had a big rain and we had to tear off the wall, you know? But we're not getting any cooperation from the planning department. So I don't know what you want to do about that. I thought that the city is supposed to help the homeowners, but it seems like you're not helping. You're causing problems. So I don't know what you want to do. I mean, I'm willing to fix those things, but you're not letting me. And we're in court right now. We go back to court with your attorney. You've sent four attorneys now. We've been to court four times, Superior Court. This is ridiculous. You know, you're wasting your money, and all you need to do is help us get this done. And like I said, I'd like my refund for resubmitting those plans again. When you agreed, Arnold, that there was no charge to that. It's in the court papers. The court recorded it when your attorney went in there. So I feel that I'm being treated unfairly, and I'm being singled out. Why? I don't know. The property is a nuisance? It's not that bad. I did a lot of improvements. There's a lot of money in that property. There's not much more to do if you guys will cooperate with me and let me do it. So, I mean, you can all talk about it and see, I mean, this has been going on for years. This is a nightmare, you know? I mean, it's an absolute stressful nightmare. I mean, and I've tried. We've submitted plans, I don't know how many times. The city lost them, and then they lied and said we took them back. We didn't take them back. We submitted three plans. You got those plans. I mean, this is ridiculous that we have to keep doing plans, keep doing corrections. I mean, the engineer quit on us. He submitted them three times. What is this? I mean, you know, he said, "I can't deal." He said, "I can't deal with the planning department." You guys fired your planning department when this happened. You got all new people. And my son went and met with Aaron right when he took office and explained the whole situation to him. He did not help us. He just let, just let the time expire until the plans weren't any good anymore. Then he sent Jean out to start fining us. So now we're in Superior Court. And if you're complaining about attorney fees, you guys created them. So how about working with us and let us get that finished? That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Do you want to hear from me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I called the police on the last city building inspectors and people because they lied to me while we were in court with the Canyon Lake POA, who was trying to fine us. The fines are right now are at $70,000, okay, for us not being able to work on the house. They red-tagged it back in 2011. So I went and talked to Jean, the code enforcement officer, because she came walking up the driveway. I said, "I'm going to catch 22. They're fining me. They're not approving my plans. I can't even get them to the city." So I got them to the city. I paid money for a special inspection. They came out. They walked the property. And I said, "Let's get it done. Let's get it done." So we hired an engineer and submitted plans, and, you know, in the meantime, all this scheming was going on in the city with the POA and everything against me. And so, since I'm a documentary filmmaker, I documented everything, so I got them, okay? And I gave you that evidence, and I showed you. I showed you. I came to you nicely, and I said, "Hey, work with me." Who do I go to when the city's being bad? Who do I put the police on you? And I called the police on you, right? And I talked to you nicely, and I said, "Hey, let's fix this problem." And what do you do? You stall. You get your attorneys to lie, and you perjured yourself in court. Your idea was to perjure yourself in court, which is a felony. Do you understand that? That's your defense? That's how you run this city? Are you kidding me?
Can we pull it back just a bit and focus on the house, please? Focus on the issues of that?
We're here because you destroyed my plans. You lied to me while I was in court with the POA, okay? And now we're in courts, okay? And it's all going to get worked out, and all the stuff's going to come out, all the mischievous stuff you guys are doing trying to destroy me. You tried to have me arrested on my own property. This one right here, right here, and I have it on video, okay? She came onto my property and said, "You can't even be here. I'm going to throw you in jail," okay? She has no right for that. She has no right for that. She's breaking the law. When you guys break the law, there's no more law. There's no more law. You're lawless, okay? So you guys need to get your act together and fix this problem. You're not going to get it with attorney fees, okay?
Thank you.
So we're asking for your help.
I will not be intimidated by you guys or the police, okay?
Okay, this has been a real mess, and a lot of actions have been taken place that were uncalled for and unnecessary. And like I said, the city's supposed to help the people, not hinder them.
Okay.
So see what you can do, Vicki, and you too, Aaron. I'd like to make this right. You know, I'm trying. I've set in a lot of plans, so talk amongst yourselves and see what you can do. There's no need to take my property.
Okay. Thank you.
You are protected by the government and your little corporate veil, but when you do illegal activity, each one of you can be prosecuted individually, just so you know.
Probably we should clarify a little bit. The court, I don't know anything about the court proceeding with POA, obviously. They appealed the citation that was given to them, I think by Jean. In fact, I think it's before Gina came. And in that process, there was a timeframe set to submit the plans. The timeframe was met at one point and then was not later met. So ultimately, there were no plans that were at least usable submitted, and eventually, no plans submitted. As a result of the lack of plans and the lack of moving forward with repair, eventually, the property was red-tagged. Mr. Athie was staying on the property, and there was an inspection warrant, which was duly obtained from a court, served in order to inspect the property for various code violations, to enter the interior of the property and enter on the property. And I believe that is when some of this disagreement occurred. It appears, the court addressed the issue of his ability to remove his property. There's been some issues about getting a timeframe set to do that. I believe there's another hearing coming up this week. I don't know what the result will be of that hearing, but that is unrelated to whether or not the property is a nuisance.
Different issue altogether. Do we have further, I'm sorry, we have, this is a proponents, opponents, and it's time for...
I know, but neither was served, and neither was he when they came on that property.
Okay.
So you were served.
I'm sorry, but truly, I need to, I need to take. Do we have other?
Gina may have some comments.
Gina, do you have some comments you'd like to make? You do not need to, if you don't want to.
I would just like to address that this whole public nuisance...
Microphone, please.
The public nuisance is to make sure that it stays on track and moves forward. If we can gain compliance, that is ultimately our goal, community preservation, if we can. However, in the two years and couple months that I've been here, we haven't moved forward at all with the property. So one way or another, compliance or non-compliance, we're looking to remedy it, to make Appaloosa a better place to live for its residents.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What is the timeline from beginning to where we are today that this process has been going on? How far back?
I have a stop-work order here today issued by the building department dated December 4th of 2008.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so I will, at this point, we will close the public hearing at 7:47, it looks like. Is that right? 7:48. And now we will have discussion by the city council. Does anybody have any questions? Are we all good? Aaron, do you have anything you want to add?
Is there anything else you want to add? I don't have anything else to add unless Betsy does.
No, it has not been a straightforward or pleasant process for anyone involved.
And I think that if you look at the time that we've been talking here, and I know there's been a lot of different things happening, but 2008 to date is a lot of years, a lot of years that a lot of things have occurred, obviously. And I think our code enforcement and the city council wants to make our community as safe and as friendly as possible. It is not our intent to cause anyone ill, but it is our intent, though, to protect those who live in that neighborhood, so that they're assured that there isn't something bad that's going to happen to their property because of some other property.
Okay, at this point, we need a motion to provide direction to staff on abatement method chosen and approve the resolution. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We have a second and a motion. We need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Warner.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Erin Krantz.
Yes.
Councilmember Haggerty.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Mayor Warren.
Yes. Okay, the measure is approved, five to zero.
Yes.
And now we will, you have the direction. The next step is to...
There'll be a period of time during which there is the ability to comply, obviously. State law requires it. And if there is not compliance within that period, between 30 and 60 days, then we will be back discussing with you how you want to proceed with abatement.
And the compliance measures, they'll be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Don, go ahead.
I was going to ask, in this compliance notification, it will be specifically all of the things on the property that are deemed unsafe, illegal...
Yes, ma'am.
Whatever.
Yes.
So then they are given X amount of time to fix that. From my view of the various pictures and the whole history of the thing, which is 10 years old, I was on the board when this was going on, so I remember from that period. I can't believe, or, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Anyway, she stated that they want to fix it. I can't believe that it could be fixed in 30 days or 60 days. If they began work, began compliance, is there some means of inspection or timeline for certain things to be done? Because this has been going on for 10 years, and I would not want to see this as another delay process. I would want to know that the intent was pure, that the compliance was definitely going to be handled, that it would be a serious effort to get these things done. How do we measure if this happens? How do we measure the timeline? What needs to be done within first, second, third? I mean, is there going to be a framework for this whole thing?
If in the next several weeks, say, there was, there were corrected building plans submitted, and there was a licensed contractor involved, and you could see that there was the beginning of work on the property, I think that that, in a good faith effort to remedy the problems, I think that would be a good sign. Bear in mind that it is not clear to us that the property is repairable. That's up to the owner to decide. And there has been some talk of a demolition permit as well. Were there to be an application for a demolition permit filed, signed by Ms. Athie, with the fees paid for it, I think that that would also be viewed as a sign of progress, and there was an actual contractor involved.
I think the city would need to be fairly specific of its expectations and time period if there was an attempt at compliance once they're noticed, because, as I say, this has struck on for 10 years. That's absurd. And I think the expectations on both sides need to be extremely clear. This is what's wrong. This is what needs to be fixed to bring it up to code, or you have the option of demolishing it. The timeframe for each of those things is X, Y, and Z. And certain things have to be done within a certain, obviously, there is so much wrong that I doubt very much that by the time the plans were drawn and the contractor was hired, I think the 30 days would more than be up. So at some point, I think we need to be very careful and very clear in exactly what our expectations are, so that there's no criticism of the city stalling, or playing games, or doing any of the things that we've been accused of at this time. I think it all needs to be very, very specific. We need to be very...
And Gina has done that, but your point's well taken. I think putting it in writing and serving it with a resolution is a really good idea.
Okay, so we have our direction. We'll move forward with this. Item 12, before we go to city manager comments, I skipped you, Gina. I wanted an update on our efforts on Bonanza. Can you give me that real quick? Can we just kind of loop them in as your, part of your comments? She's going to piggyback on there.
Actually, I was going to have her do that after, right after me, so...
Well, then, city manager comments, please.
Okay, so, yeah, it'll be city manager slash staff comments this time, because she's had something else to report to you as well.
Oh, okay. Well, then, Gina, would you step up, please? Apparently, you have something to say.
So, but first, just, I think as the council's aware, the county fire chief, Chief John Hawkins, has been reassigned to McCall Fire, and so they have an interim at this time. And we have not heard from the county on the replacement process, how long and what they're looking at. So as we get more information, we will pass that along. So Gina will also, no, Gina's up here. She'll give you the information on Bonanza, and she'll also, council asks for information back on the smoking enforcement. She'll give that as well.
Aaron, before we go to that, I know yesterday was a public safety, but we've talked about this many times, about the fact that we're paying the fair pay now to the fire department, but they weren't able to find the ability to come to the public safety.
Right.
Are you making any progress at all?
I try to. They said they'd make it when they can. I haven't had a chance. We just had the meeting yesterday. I need to speak with Chief Pemberton about a couple of things, and I'm going to bring that to his attention again.
Well, if not, I would like to, myself, as a chair of public safety, or the mayor, to someone talk to them and tell them, it's fair, it's time to step forward and be part of our community.
And I think what I'll do is, I'll have, I'll have him come by for a meeting, and I'll invite you to that as well.
Thank you.
You're up.
So my first, well, I can go ahead and address the marijuana dispensary, because we have an ordinance that prohibits that. And we had the name of the person who was in custody. We were able to locate the address. Fortunately, at the time of the warrant service, our building inspector was just one door over doing a building inspection, so he was able to provide me with the location while there was a little bit of a delay between the sheriff's department communicating us that address. So the administrative citation did go out on our end. However, there is one lingering issue which was sort of brought up when you guys were talking to Lieutenant Husky about giving us a call and letting us come out. Now, what would be required to get inside that house is going to be an inspection warrant to see, and I've never been to a marijuana grow, that hasn't altered the electrical, altered the HVAC system, added additional resources. We did find out that the sheriff's department did, was able to pull the meter, so they did cut power that day. However, we have observed that they have a gracious neighbor that is allowing them to have electricity via an electrical cord. So it's not going to be able to draw enough power to continue a grow. I can definitely attest to that in my limited knowledge. However, we still need to get inside. We still need to see what's going on... we still need to get inside. We still need to see what's going on in there. And we're hoping that sending the citation and request for the property owner to reach out to us and contact us, we might get what is referred to as voluntary inspection. However, barring that, we would be seeking an inspection warrant from the judge.
Have the plants been removed?
Were removed, the first ones, yes. But if they're tapping into, well, they could be tapping into, to make their coffee, for all we know.
He's living there.
Right, he's living there. It's a code violation, and we still, and our code, I believe, has to do with a locked door also. I mean, there's a lot involved in our, in our personal code. So we'll, of course, need help, and I don't want you going alone.
Well, yeah, I know.
So, so you'll be working, working...
I love my job.
I mean, I could go with you, but I'm not allowed to help either.
Yeah.
So we just need to make sure that we pursue this.
Yes.
We have, we need to protect our citizens, too. You are protecting our citizens. We need to be able to do that also.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed. So, just wanted to update, we, in the December council meeting, we said that we would go ahead and hit with the state law notices to the businesses. So myself and staff, we did contact the three main locations. We went to every single business, gave them the state law notice that everybody approved for distribution. We're still working on handing that out, but now we're doing it more on a new business or case by case when we go out to just make contact next door, give them the letter. We're still working on that. However, we haven't had any additional complaints from the Railroad Canyon Financial Businesses, or from the Hair Salon locations that maybe had customers that were smoking too close to the doors. I can attest to, I'm now seeing a lot more people smoking out in the parking lot, which means our town center people are aware and they're complying.
Good.
No more complaints, not, not one. Yeah.
Excellent progress, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have further comments? Okay. So we move to committee and council reports, comments. Councilmember Bonner?
Well, now, my, my activity is RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission, and you'd be surprised how much activity is going on within the state relative to transportation. And you heard about SB1 probably, where the gas tax went up, the diesel, the diesel, tax went up, and some of the registration fees went up. And there's a lot of petition work to try to reverse that. And it's interesting with, you talk to the cities, and at the RCTC meeting we had, I think one of them, probably the comment made best is the mayor pro tem at Temecula, which says, "I'm a red hard Republican. I don't like big government. I don't like taxes." But sometimes you have to accept the fact that we need to have these roads and bridges repaired. And so I think it's going to be interesting how this thing goes down, and what happens. So I went to a two-day vision conference in Indian Wells on the end of January. It was very informative. And then, then the mayor and I went to the move I-15 through Temecula Regional Task Force, and I think the mayor already wants to talk about that, so I'll wait until he do that. I'm going to make a final comment. It's a comment. It's not have to do a report. I'm really disappointed. I've been here since 2010 to 2014. I was in here, in the room in 2015, and our representative was for the entire council, and talked to them, and the public had the right to hear from the council, from the representative. Now we find out, one more time, we found out, not directly, because I talked to his staff, and that person never mentioned to me that he wants to do it again next week at Pepe's on the 20th. So he doesn't want to have any public people around, because, you know, he's going to get static. And I think it's sad that we're going to allow a congressman to do what he wants to do, which is best for our citizens and the people that he represents. And my recommendation is if we can't do it in this chamber, then we should cancel it. That's my feeling, and I feel very strong about it, and I'll put it in public if necessary. But it's just absolutely wrong. Thank you. Well, in writing.
Thank you. Jordan?
Thank you. I'm going to start off with my usual statistics from WRCOG and the Hero Program. And so far, there's been, this is for Canyon Lake only I'm talking about, 743 applications submitted, 583 approved, 8.37 million funded, 71 jobs created, supposedly energies, I say supposedly because I'm not sure this is verified, energy saved 76.5 kilowatts, water saved 17.5 million gallons. This, that was the Hero Program. We had a presentation by Robert Martin, excuse me, Robert Martin, who is the head of the Morongo Band of Mission Indians, and who is also a member of WRCOG. The Morongo Indian Reservation has 1,100 members, 3,700 acres. It's the third largest reservation in California. It has 1,200 reservation residents. The Morongo Government has 17 departments, including public safety, fire department, public works, education, environmental protection, realty, and healthcare. The Morongo Fire Department, since June, firefighters have spent nearly 2,000 hours battling fires across California, and they named the various fires, and I think we're all familiar with those. But it's, that reservation is a city in itself, and they contribute an awful lot to charity and various organizations throughout Riverside County. Vector, I'm not going to read this one. I'm just going to read the topic. Public health confirms the first case of sexually transmitted Zika virus in LA County. It's here for anybody to read if they want to read, but I'm not going... Well... It's an awful lot to read. To skip, to answer your question. Okay, it's there for you to read.
Yeah.
And there's some other items here about light pollution may provide, promote, excuse me, the spread of the Westin Iowa virus. So, but birds like to fly around if there's light in the evening. The virus will stay with them longer, whereas in a dark environment, it apparently disappears quite quickly. SCAG, SCAG has a new location, and it's really, really something to see. We're in the new building. It's the tallest building west of the Mississippi downtown Los Angeles. It's 78 stories, where SCAG office is on the 73rd floor. But we get to take the mass transit elevator right, right up to, to the office. But it's quite something to see. This past week, Mayor Garcetti came to visit the general assembly that we have in between our meetings, and he was promoting the Olympics mostly, but he had some very interesting things to talk about. And I have some, well, snips or clips, I guess, from SCAG. And if I read them all, I'll go way over my time, but you can stop me when you want to, but...
Stop. I'm sorry. I couldn't resist that.
That was good.
I just couldn't resist.
Hey, I can take it. I can take it. Pardon me? I didn't. Well, that's what I get for keeping my mouth open, apparently. I'll just read a couple of quick items here for them. Southern Californians prefer private cars over public transit. That's very interesting. The Southern California Association of Government, which is SCAG, report finds that transit use in Southern California has declined significantly over the past 10 years as car ownership has increased. Santa Ana is considering rent control as housing costs. Santa Ana is looking whether to become the first city in Orange County to implement rent control on apartments and houses. Traffic is terrible in California now. I'm sure that's not news to anybody, so I won't read the whole article. It says, "Drivers, believe it or not, are putting down their cell phones. Faced with a tough year old, a tough year old cellphone law, more California drivers are putting their devices aside entirely when behind the wheel." Yeah, I'm not going to read that one either. And we don't care about the Bay Area right now either, so, these are all snippets. I'm not stopping yet, Don. I've got one more, one more page here. I think I just said that, but this is in a different form. It says, "The Los Angeles Times has repeatedly reported that public transit agencies have watched their ridership numbers fall off a cliff over the last five years, with multi-year decreases in mass transit use up to 25 percent."
I'm wondering if that has to do with more fuel-efficient cars, electric cars and so forth.
I'm going to go into that, my report.
Okay, because it just seems...
He's stealing half my report.
I'll see how he is. See.
Hey, who's giving this report?
They're giving it for both of us.
He's just asking a question.
It's a good question. Ohio Ontario has been awarded a $35 million grant to help transform downtown, and that's very nice. We don't care about Beverly Hills. Supporters of California's gas tax increase are ready to fight a ballot measure to repeal it. Signature gathering is underway for a ballot measure that would repeal the gas tax hike and other revenue boosters in the bill which Randy had just mentioned, known as SB1, or the Road Repair and Accountability Act. And here's a question that says, "Could a ferry solve the West Side's traffic problem?" A ferry in the Santa Monica Bay could provide a faster...
F-E-R-R-Y. Sorry, I was clarifying the spelling. I was thinking Tinker Bell.
I'm going to go back to the Zika thing there. Okay, last thing. I can see Larry's getting bored over there. "A ferry in the Santa Monica Bay could provide a faster stress fee alternate to driving. Fantasizing about more transportation options occupies the time of any West Sider sitting in gridlock."
Is that three minutes?
You must admit that my reports gather a whole, a whole lot of comments.
Yes, yes.
And, and questions that I can't answer most of the time. And I think that's, probably makes up for the time that, on reports that I didn't give the last couple of months, so... If you need any further information, it's here, for the asking. Thank you.
All kidding aside, we all attend various meetings, and it's important that we brief each other on the results of those meetings so that you're not wasting your time and money sending us to those. And it's also good to brief the public on these things that happen. Otherwise, you don't know. You've got these representatives out there doing whatever they're doing, and they're not giving you any news, so. And that said, Don Haggerty, it's your turn.
Okay. Well, I have a report to give, which he's given part of, and I left it home, so, and I don't want to wing it, because it's short, but it's very informative, so I'm going to give it next, in March. I did attend a rapid transit seminar in Riverside that was extremely informative, and I wanted to give some information out about that. But just today, I was, attended the Riverside Transit Agency meeting, budget meeting, and they were discussing the drop in fares, and they spent quite a bit of money doing a, having a consultant do a study on what exactly was going on, and the results of that were that there's been a huge increase. I don't remember the exact percentage, because I left my papers home, but of low-income families, particularly in the central Los Angeles area, and it is slowly moving out, that are purchasing cars that couldn't afford them before, but now that incomes are going up, and there's more jobs, they have a little money, and it's the first time they've ever had a car. They were riding the bus, now they're driving their car. That has impacted our freeway congestion. RTA is hoping, we sat and discussed a marketing program that would highlight the length of time from one destination to another for an individual to drive, and the cost of driving and parking and so forth versus taking public transportation. And I think they're going to, to do some kind of a marketing program to, I think with gas at almost $4 a gallon now, that seems to be the mark where people quit driving and start taking public transportation. And because of the increased number of low-income people that are buying cars, it may not take too long for them to see how much, especially with the gas tax and so forth, that they will see that, hopefully with a marketing program, that it would be much more reasonable and shorter time for them to take public transportation. Right now, all of the RTA buses have Wi-Fi. They can carry wheelchairs, bicycles, surfboards, whatever you have, they can carry it, and they're extremely efficient. So there will be a publicity coming out on that. I also wanted to just mention that I've had a concern for some time. I have a number of friends who are housebound. They have to have someone drive them anywhere they go, and their licenses have been taken away. Also, a couple of friends who are veterans who are not able, they're handicapped to the point that they can't really drive themselves. They've been doing the dial or ride thing. RTA is, has developed a program called RID, R-I-D-E, and I'm not going to give you this synonym for it, but anyway, they will bring out a mentor to anyone that would like to start taking public transportation. That person attends with them, whatever, wherever they need to go, if it's a veterans hospital or whatever, using public transportation. They assist them in the timing, and the, you know, what bus to take, travel with them, and help it bring them home. And they will do that as long as that person needs help before they have the confidence to be able to do it themselves. They've also developed a program where those, and I have a friend who hates to ask me, and she hates to ask anybody, but she has to ask people to drive her places. And they've developed a program where you can fill out a form, and the state will pay the person's mileage that is driving, a handicapped person, which the people doing it are glad to do it. They're not looking for reimbursement, but I think it makes the person who's asking feel more comfortable, more independent, if they know that the person they're asking is going to get mileage reimbursed to them. So I think the whole idea is to... So I think the whole idea is to... The comfort level for the individual who's handicapped more than the person who's doing it. But I think that's a great program. I have decided, and I met yesterday morning with the senior center and representative from the POA, and they are going to come out and make a presentation. We're going to... Hopefully, I'm in conversations right now to find out how far we can go. We discussed putting a flyer in, each Friday flyer, to introduce people. We need to get the people out. They had a hearing impaired program where they would give them a free phone or whatever they needed for the hearing impaired. They had five people show up. Of course, there may not be that many hearing impaired people, but I really want to get as many people out as possible. So we're developing a publicity program through the POA and through the senior center to try and get as many people out. RTA will make a presentation. They furnish refreshments. They provide a book with all of the bus routes to everywhere in Riverside County. They provide a little map that you can have, so you can just look at it. You don't have to look at the pages. They have fair rates. They have all these handouts that they will give to people. And then they will take them at a separate time. They'll do this presentation and have people sign up, and they will pick a destination like Temecula Shopping Center or the outlets, someplace that they would like to go. And they will take them on the bus to that location, have them do their shopping or have lunch or whatever, and bring them back to just get people more comfortable. I haven't ridden a bus since I was in junior high school, so I'm not real comfy nor am most California people because we are very independent, because we're not like these coast. We're spread out, so everybody's used to driving. And we are going to have to reduce the congestion, and the way to do that is through public transportation. So they have the bus to Disneyland now, which is a fabulous idea. It's very inexpensive. You don't pay for parking. You don't have to fight the crowds, drop you right at the door. You don't have to walk. So people that are handicapped would have the ability to be able to get to the gate, get their wheelchair, and they can do Disneyland. They have a 25-cent fare in the summers for students, and that was really utilized. They have discount fares for college, various colleges, and that's being highly utilized. So it's working, but it's going to take time. And right now, as I said, I'm working on a program for the seniors in Canyon Lake, and hopefully we'll get a good response to that, and I'll keep you informed.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Oh, I've got a bit of lightning news for you guys since we've been talking about transportation. The LA basin, I'm not talking about the state of California. The population is 20 million now. Projected population in 30 years is 50. So you talk about... And that is why they're looking at Metro Rail and all the things, because our freeway systems are so far behind. They were designed for a 5-million population, where it's 20, and it's going to go to 50. Excuse me. I wanted just to tout Randy, Councilman Bonner, myself. We're on the finance and planning, and we've been working really hard this last year to try to reel in some of our cost from doing an internal audit on different billable items that we've been billed for, but really didn't have the documentation trail to find out what we're paying for. I think we're zeroing in on a process, and I think we have possibly in the very near future a recommendation for maybe a change in how we do business. But I have to compliment Randy and I. We've been working a lot. Our last meeting, we didn't finish with our finance section. We took a break for public safety, but we came back. We didn't finish our finance meeting until noon. So that's how intense we are working on that. I had the opportunity, thanks to the city and my position, to attend the League of Cities Conference in Sacramento for new council and new mayors. Very informative. Got to have dinner with Riverside County delegation, which was 12 from throughout the county. Got to make good contact with, I guess, what we consider a colleague and a friend now from Eastvale. And a lot of the theme that I found there is regional partnerships. And whether you're... And trust me, north, central, and south have definite differences. And you don't hear it here so much, but when you're in Sacramento and every day on the news, it's talking about the new proposal to split the state in thirds. You don't hear about it on our news, but every night up there, it was taking the coast and breaking the coast off all the way from above San Francisco all the way down to Orange County. That's a state. The inland counties are a state, and then they'll have some other... They'll have what they call the rural areas, but they may combine both of those. And they think that that has got a lot of momentum because of the extreme differences between the coastal cities and the inland region. So that was quite a discussion. Believe it or not, the chairman of the RCA... I saw him... I had a meeting at this week, and we talked about the BLM again. So there may be some more discussion on that, but we'll see what happens on that. Interesting, when I was up there, the city of Pleasanton, this is how they do their priority work plan for the entire city for the year. For the... This is... They run a two-year budget. And what they do is they put this out in a very fancy booklet form, but it talks about the process. The city and the citizens work together to establish priorities for their community and how those suggestions get into the flow and either get acted upon or put into a five-year plan, or they get deferred. And then they set priorities, and they do that in a very effective way. We had their... One of their council members and their city manager do this as a team-building workshop, and then how they get community interaction. So that was quite interesting. And Jack and I picked up 20 cases of water today, thanks to the Water District for... It won't... Definitely won't feed the entire commuter... Or give us the entire community water, but we do have some for our workers. So with that, I'll pass off. I won't take quite so long. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. I have a few things. I'll try to go through them quickly. I'm on the water, different water committees. ALM treatments are coming in again on Monday. Starting Monday, it'll be this next week. So if you haven't seen it, it is actually a very cool thing to watch. You can also go online, as usual, and track that. If you want that address, let me know, and I can give it... I didn't write it down, I'm sorry. I attended a student assembly with chemistry teachers and about 350 students just a couple of weeks ago, discussing... Well, they made the mistake of trying to compare us to that Michigan... Flint, Michigan. So we set them straight. What is the difference between drinking water and so forth? And intentional mistakes and cyanotoxins and so forth. It was very interesting. The hall was crowded. They seemed eager to listen, and it was a really good opportunity to get in there and get some facts into their knowledge base. On the waterfront, EPA has approached the TMDO, which is a total maximum daily load task force for a possible membership to help address cyanotoxins, which is a real hot issue in California right now. I don't know about throughout the other states, but California has a water board that has decided this is going to be their poster child this year. On the animal friends front, I had a meeting. It looks like they're going to probably have to hire a human resources manager. They have well over 70 employees, for the most part, between 70 and 80. Anything over 50, you need something to have some kind of control. So we are working on the budget to see what we can do to move other things around and try to reduce that cost. But I don't know that that's one that we can avoid. We have an HR person that's out there once a week, and that is just not enough for all of the issues that they face. We are not a no-kill shelter. We are a control shelter. But we're very proud of the numbers that we're able to achieve. Last year wasn't as good as the year before as far as adopting out and taking care of these issues. For a non-no-kill shelter, we do a fabulous job at Animal Friends, and they should be applauded. But there are things that we can do, and if money ever becomes a non-issue, then we'll look at those. But for the first step, we actually have to have somebody out there managing HR issues so that our facilities person in charge, Neil, can actually do his job. There is a consideration I want... We should probably put it on an upcoming agenda. There is a statewide push for mandatory spay and neutering of animals. Now, I know that's not palatable to most people, certainly not to many in our rural communities, but the only way to keep from having to euthanize too many animals is to stop it at the source and have mandatory... We already have mandatory licensing, so it's just something we should all talk about, decide if that's the way. I know they're going to approach us and ask us to do that, so let's just get ahead of it. Mr. Bonner mentioned the 15-215 task force move. I-15 is, I think it was called. We haven't... Mr. Bonner, sorry. Randy has said. But I'm not sure what the name's going to be. It's a new task force that's been formed, and it's to address traffic flow on the 15 to get... Right now, I can't go to Murrieta on a lunch hour because of the traffic being so bad. So they're trying to get... People aren't getting work done. You can't get to a doctor's appointment. People can't get to their employment, and something has to be done. I know that we touched on this briefly. SB 1 is nobody's favorite. It's a gas tax that is most likely going to be up for repeal. There are projects that are being covered by that money that will help alleviate some of our traffic issues. So on the one hand, nobody likes to be taxed. On the other hand, if we do stop that, we lose those things. So it's just something you consider. I'm not pushing one way or another. My jury is still out on that. But I am saying that where the knee-jerk reaction is to sign that repeal, there's also got to be something said for... We've got to move these projects forward, and we can't without money. So that's one of the things the task force is also dealing with, is how to get funding to the more... You know, obviously, we need help here, not just in Temecula, but we need it from the 74 down, too. The Temecula Y, but the Temecula Y seems to be the focus. And that is all I have for my month. Oh, Student of the Month, going back to that for a moment. I know I already said it. I thoroughly enjoy this opportunity to meet these students and to be part of this program. I know you went for many years. It is enlightening and a very exciting thing to attend because you get to see the best of what's coming. So I would offer, although I don't like the idea, anybody who wants to go to one of these, I'm going to... When I get the date, I'm going to put it out so that anybody can go. And I will give that moment to those people. I'm telling you, it makes a huge difference in how you see our students and how you see our upcoming human race. So I'd be willing to do that on occasion. Anybody who wants to go should go. It's well worth it. And they love having our city there to represent.
Actually, more than one person.
Yes, that's true. That's true. So I could still go.
They plan on 100 people for each lunch.
Okay. It's very cool. They give you a lunch, and the students from the culinary arts, they put on the lunch. They cook it, they serve it. It's very nice.
The tables are never full.
No, they're never full. No, the students really appreciate it.
The food is good.
It is good. I think it's sizzling, so... Okay. I'm done. Thank you very much, but Ms. Haggerty has one.
I had a meeting with Melissa Melendez regarding this transportation tax, and her suggestion was, don't... I mean, sign the petition to repeal it. Sign it. Her reasons were... And this is what I met with her to ask her, because we had a tax added a couple of years ago, and it was supposed to go for infrastructure and bridges and blah, blah, blah. And it went into the train, and it never got anywhere. And when I met with her, my question was, "What is the wording in this new bill? Does it specify exactly where the money goes?" And she said, "No, it does not. It's exactly like the other one." There is a bill that's coming up that will specifically point to specific things that the money has to go to, but that bill is not passed yet. And her reasoning was, "The money is there. They spend it on other things." And then they say, "Oh, we have to have this for the infrastructure." Well, the argument of infrastructure, there's no question. It's definitely needed. The argument is where they spend the money. And if they spend it on all kinds of foolish and frivolous things and then taxes some more for the infrastructure, that's not fair. So her suggestion was to sign the petition, force them to go back and cut some of the ridiculous things they're spending money on, like free...
Don, I'm not clear. She said, "We should or should not sign?"
Sign the repeal.
Sign the petition. To recall, because she's not against infrastructure. None of us are. But she said, "What it will do is force the state to go back and spend their funds more wisely." So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because it's...
Yeah.
Some along that same line...
Yes.
There's a Senate bill that's not on the floor yet that any city that does not have designated low-income housing property available will be denied their share of those properties.
Of SB 1?
Yes.
I'll have to look that up. I hadn't heard of that one.
It's pending. It's not...
Okay.
Is it an amendment to it?
No, no. It's another bill.
Separate bill.
Another bill. Not yet. What's that?
I'll find it.
You can find it.
I could probably look it up.
We know he's got a little D next to his name.
Well, there's also another proposal that was brought up when I was up there of taking away on transportation corridors the right of your city to zone those corridors. And then what that means is the state will identify these corridors, and they're bus routes, train routes, anything that's identified as a transportation corridor. First quarter of mile, they can be eight stories. The next quarter is their 55 stories. The design is to get a lot of people close to the...
Right.
It's social engineering to get people to live close to the transportation hubs because then they've got access. A lot of the inner cities are doing that right now that have a transportation hub.
They have another bill also to go after Proposition 13.
Oh, they've been going after 13 ever since it was...
If you look at your gas... I mean, at your property tax bill, even if you're on 13, there's a whole page of things that they found a way to add on for an extra $150, $200.
Okay, our next meeting, March 7th at 6:30 for open session. We are adjourned at 8:37. Oh, one more thing to mention to everybody here and anybody who's interested in knowing. We are... The city of Canyon Lake is hosting the League of California Cities on March 12. We are hosting the dinner at the Country Club, March 12. And it's... And the menu they put together is fabulous, so...
Hold on a second.
And it's your birthday.
Welcome to the Travel Club.
You came here instead of the Travel Club.
This is not a gendered thing.
No, the Travel Club, my chair of office was up in December.
Oh, okay.
And I said I did not want to take it. And I said I did not want to take it.